Six o'clock P M in person and via Zoom at Council on Aging, ten fifty-nine Somerset Avenue, Dyton Mass. The meeting I D is eight seven five zero three zero six zero eight one one. And the pass code is five three one seven three six. The phone number call is six four six nine three one three eight six zero. So we go right into new business. Laura M. Dearest, Office Manager, Council on Aging, Disclosure of Interest. Do you have an interest in the Council on Aging?
Do you need me to read it for? So I submitted a form for disclosure of interest for the hiring of an outreach coordinator. The two board members we have here interviewed, they ended up choosing a candidate. That's my cousin. I tried to keep that very anonymous until they actually made their decision. So this essentially is a saying that. So if you want me to kind of go through the process of the hiring, I can do that to try to be as transparent as possible.
What I would recommend that the board just really like accept the disclosure as outlined.
Actually, there is one piece that, so I reached out to Leanne and Karen prior to all the interviews starting, and they informed me of this paper that needed to be completed. So after I completed it, I didn't include on the last section where it says financial interest in the matter. My response was, my first cousin has financial interest in the matter, as the town of Dyton would be your employer. My position does not have authority to sign Dyton Council on Aging payroll. And then when I submitted this to Leanne, she responded and asked if my position would be involved in any of the evaluation process, which it does not. So I replied in the email with that, but it's not actually listed on here, so I can add that if needed.
I don't think it's necessary. Like, in my opinion, like, everything really speaks to itself.
Okay.
That's just my feeling.
Agree.
Is there a motion on the floor, please?
I'd like to make a motion to accept as presented and place on file.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded and aye, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
If you care, it's a aye. Thank you, Laura. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, guys, to make you come.
No, that's okay.
Happy to do it.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Have a good day, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, again. Review, discuss and act. Police Union Memorandum of Understanding.
Yes, so I'm very happy that we've been working with the police union. As the board knows, about how three weeks ago, the board approved our JavaScript and the posting for the position of Deputy Chief of Police. And just based on where we are financially, we did, we, we, we did have an administrative sergeant position that was outlined through the collective bargaining agreement that we have with the police union. And just so we have the ability to, to be able to, to be able to post and hire for the position of Deputy Chief of Police, this M O U basically gives us the ability to do that without having the responsibility to backfill the administrative sergeant position as well. We would actually still keep the, we would still keep the command structure of the three sergeants that we have. That would be supplemented by the Deputy Chief of Police along with the Chief of Police. And this would, this M O A basically has the town in the police union agreeing that essentially the filling of the position of administrative sergeant like is optional. So Chief, is there anything you wanted to add on that?
No, nothing I would add on that. Ever since agreement and union, I guess the biggest thing was this, is if down the road, if they still would have the opportunity, if there would be growth, if we could ever hire an administrative sergeant later on, that would still be available to them.
You know, we're not closing out the position.
No.
It's just...
It's not vacant.
Right.
It's there. We need to reestablish that later on.
Yep.
And that they understood and everything was transparent.
Sure. Okay, thank you. Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to accept the union, police union's M O U?
I would like to make that motion.
I will second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you care, it's a aye. Thank you. Review, discuss and act. Fiscal year two thousand twenty-five budget recommendations. Review proposed town meeting warrant articles and placing of articles.
So this is a deja vu. We're, we do have, just as we know, we're working to finalize the warrant. We do have a few departments. There are a few proposed department operational budgets with the recommendations of the cycling and the frame from different at this point. I can then accomplish that. And we, I can then accomplish that. We also have post-warrant articles that was submitted, that was submitted for the annual town meeting warrant. I can, the board has, the board has to finish going through those, evaluating those, evaluating our ability to fund those, and then decide which of those articles they want to place on the warrant. Just as, just as a follow-up to last week, in the packet, I'm going to bring it up, in the packet, there was a question about, there was a question, there was a question about, you know, whether we had an ability to do any, there was a question whether or not we had any opportunity to borrow for it, whether we had, whether we have an opportunity to spread the cost of purchasing, spread the cost of purchasing like excavator, I like go, I like over three to four years. The good news is that we do. And so, in the updated, in the updated free cash and article funding scenario, we do have, we do have the first year of a lease purchase for an excavator, I can actually fund it at a cost of forty-five thousand dollars. That forty-five, that forty-five thousand dollars, if the board, if the board is interested in advancing that, that would, that would be a three-year borrowing. That would be, that would be the three-year cost. So it would, it would be roughly, forty-five thousand dollars a year, like for the, for the next three years, I get zero percent interest.
Okay. Is there an option to buy?
Yeah, oh, yes. Oh, 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 yes, I'm sorry. Like, we would only at the end of that. We would have, we have to pay an additional dollar to be able to own it.
Okay. That dollar's going to kill us.
Yeah. But yeah, we have that option. And like, as I mentioned, like, oh, yeah, like, and as I mentioned, like, it's zero percent interest, I believe, as well.
Yep.
So we're able to spread that cost down, spread that cost down over three years' time. Is there anything you wanted to add? You've done all the late work on it.
I understand.
And so that, based on, based, based on, based, based on the differences, like, in recommendations by, by the B O S, like, in the Finkham, like, at this point, like, if we, if, oh, yeah, if we, like, were to find the first year lease of the X, of the X, of the excavator, like, under, under the, under the current Finkham recommendations, we would have, we would have a free, we would carry over about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in free cash. Like, if the, if, of the budget, like, in the, we're voted based on the board's cycling, based on the board's cycling recommendations, I did not, and not including board health, we would have, we would have a free cash carryover of just over a hundred and eight thousand dollars into the twenty-five. Hope you can entertain any questions or concerns or issues. But anyhow.
We could give them questions.
No.
Which ones? Mark?
I'll second.
Okay. So we'll start, start this year.
Yes.
And when will we receive it, Tom? Is this one of those things where we order it on these three years now?
No.
Okay.
Well, both they have a used one and a new one available.
Okay.
The new one matches us. That's the way the kind of ways to set up. They have both available.
Yep. And is this for the new one or are you using?
What Mike's talking about, the forty-five thousand would be from...
The new one, what's the age we go for?
It's three, it'd be a full payment of thirty-five?
Yeah, yeah, it's like a, like a ten thousand dollar difference, but like just...
Three or forty-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Come on. Yeah, yeah, it can be three at thirty-five, but three at forty-five.
Oh, three. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, Carl. You know, we asked a creative solution so that you were able to, you know, pull this forward, and this is a creative solution. Zero percent. Awesome.
It's three different vendors, it's three different entities on the municipal financing. This one, Mike is familiar with, that's new to me. He signed the final upon this.
Yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, if you're like a purchasing agreement through the Mass Higher Education, the Mass Higher Education Consortium, like, which we're already a member of, so it basically helps subject a payment box already as well.
Right. We did, we did pick a model that's interesting, would like one fits our financial needs at this time. The other units are a different model. We're not, we're not looking at a specific model. We're looking at a specific financial match.
Absolutely.
It's a different approach. This seems to be the match. Well, it's basically five thousand dollars less than what you were looking for to finance one for the year. But I mean, to purchase one, which at zero percent interest, obviously spreading out the payment works. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. You want to wait till we get to that article to vote on?
Yeah, yeah, I would. Like, I just wanted to, like, call really, like, the difference in the follow-up from the last meeting.
Sure.
But yeah, yeah, but it's, what is like amenable, like, if we wanted to hopefully just go quickly again to the warrant, the board can decide which, like, of the articles we want to place, not placing both in there.
Sure.
If that works?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm the one. Oh, like, oh, yeah, it's, oh, yeah, doing a lot of time at the last minute, going through the process of the articles. So like, if we could avoid a lot, like, if I have the ability to avoid just relitigating.
Yeah.
Yes.
Article one.
Yes, these are all basic.
Yeah, we do have to have a motion to...
Oh, for which one? Like, we need to do that last time. Okay. So is there a motion on the floor for article one?
I'd like to make a motion to place article one on the warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you care, it's a aye. Article two?
Motion to place article two on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article three?
Motion to place article three on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you care, it's a aye. Article four?
Motion to place article four as presented on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article five?
Do you want to wait on article five, or we're good?
We, we can place it, but like, it'll be like with each of the recommendations anyways, like, so that'll be inherent.
Okay. Motion to place article five with, as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article six, can we, can we? You don't need to read them, because they're all numbered at times.
Yes.
So article six?
Motion to place on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article seven?
Motion to place on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article eight?
Motion to place on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. To see if the town will vote to recommend bylaws, this is number nine?
Motion to place on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article ten? Oh, aye. Sorry.
Motion to place on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article eleven?
Motion to place on annual town meeting warrants.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article twelve?
Motion to place on annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article thirteen?
Motion to place on annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She says at point of edification, articles fourteen, fifteen, like, and sixteen, they go automatically to the warrant by the C P C, so those are automatically there.
Beautiful. So stabilization was fifty thousand is what we talked about?
We, we talked, we talked, we talked to the last meeting about fifty thousand dollars for capital stabilization.
Oh, this is what we're going to leave off until the fall?
I thought eighteen would really work.
Yeah, like, article eighteen would leave off, like, until the fall. But there, but there was a discussion about having a recommendation on article seventeen for capital stabilization in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Yes. So I'd like to make a motion that we place article seventeen on the annual town meeting warrant to transfer from available funds fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. Are you going to recommend it at the same time?
And to recommend it.
I'll second that.
Hey, motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, eighteen we're going to take off, so will you vote to take it off, or just?
I can vote, we'll vote not to place.
Vote not to place. Okay.
Motion not to place article eighteen on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article nineteen?
This is the... I, 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 yeah, this is an additional seventy-five thousand dollars, like, in building up our, I can building up available Main Street funding.
Main Street, correct.
So I, motion to place on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Twenty?
I, yeah, do you have a motion to recommend as well, just like, so we can hopefully vote on the same, if that's okay?
Sure.
Yes. Motion to recommend article nineteen for the annual town meeting warrant.
Second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article twenty?
Motion to place and recommend article twenty on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you care, it's a aye. Article twenty-one?
Motion to place and recommend article twenty-one on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article twenty-two?
I would recommend, like, at this point, the board votes not to place.
Right.
Motion not to place article twenty-two on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article twenty-three?
Motion to place and recommend article twenty-three on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article twenty-four? Aye.
Motion to place and recommend article twenty-four on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article twenty-five?
Let's see. Motion to place and recommend article twenty-five on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article twenty-six, we'll change it to three thousand, right?
Yeah, should we only change on article twenty-six? We dropped down from the four to three?
Yep. Okay, article twenty-six.
There's just, so for that one, I, I just don't see it on, for recommendations, or on a list for...
Yeah, yeah, because our available funding for that would come from existing funding in the already existing article.
Beautiful. All right.
So we won't have to draw free cash for that.
Awesome. Motion to place and recommend article twenty-six on annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article twenty-second?
Motion to place and recommend article twenty-seven on annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article twenty-eight?
Motion to place and recommend article twenty-eight on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article twenty-nine?
Yeah, I can just say a quick, just a quick clarification on that. We are ending based on, based, based on the seventh month installment bills for the F Y twenty-four assessment. We are ending, like, F Y twenty-four with remaining twenty-five thousand dollar balance. So we do have an ability to transfer that twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars towards the, towards the, like, thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the, for the, our home system. So we'd only have to draw, I draw upon another, like, sixty, hundred dollars, like, from free cash. So we don't have to draw the whole amount from free cash.
Great.
And that, I can, oh, yeah, I can, oh, yeah, I can, that is included, oh, yeah, oh, that's included in our updated funding recommendation. But we don't have to change the text of the article itself.
Right. Okay. So article twenty-nine?
Motion to place and recommend article twenty-nine on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article thirty?
Motion to place and recommend article thirty on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article thirty-one?
Motion to place and recommend article thirty-one on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article thirty-two?
Motion to place and recommend article thirty-two on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article thirty-three?
Motion to place and recommend article thirty-three on annual town meeting warrant.
Second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article thirty-four?
Motion to place and recommend article thirty-four on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article thirty-five?
Motion to place and recommend article thirty-five on the annual town meeting warrant.
Second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article thirty-six?
So for the parking, all the parties got together and discussed this parking bylaw?
Yeah, we haven't as of yet. However, however, like, however, early in the week, the highway superintendent, he did send out, he did send out the updated version with the back changes that act, oh, 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 yeah, the act, he spelled what would change and what wouldn't. Like, we haven't, we haven't had the ability to meet, though, though, with the Chief of Police, like, in last week. However, if the board, however, if the board does vote, however, like, if the board does vote to place, oh, yeah, we do have another week, so we can always pull it. Oh, like, if there's a huge overlapping concern, if, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, we won't have the ability to meet in the next week. We just haven't had everything, like, oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, over the last three days, but everything going, we just haven't had that yet.
I, I'd like to say if we could place it, and then if the chief has a chance to look it over, I know it's fair to call you back to another meeting, but if you could at least set his course, find it, so we, and then we can recommend that, that we gave him that. Okay.
Do you have anything on that, Tom?
Aye. Be one more small edit and have copies for the board views. If you want that now, or we're going to talk about this more after you vote for the warrant.
No.
Just a minor clerical part. I believe legal would have caught it anyways.
Thank you.
What I changed is B, sort of, it starts with the word Cedar Street, so it's clear. So you guys, I think Mike wanted to show the strikeout, so I just read it to see what's being striked, and regular would be indicating what's being added. And I think for that, that does make it look clearer and easier. That's why I changed since what I shared with Mike is B on that section three, so it reads both sides. It starts with the word Cedar Street, both sides are written. Whenever they're winning grants and through the bylaws, you get jumps out of there. The unknown, it's even a strikeout where it says repeal ATM. I'm not sure what that means. Six one, and that's the same date as the paragraph we're leaving in section three, where it talks about Pearl Street. I'm sure legal will catch that, what that is about. But it just doesn't make sense to have no parking during the day in those streets. Now, that Pearl Street has been refurbished a few years ago, it would be easier to accommodate the chief's needs, you know, the paint and curves and stuff like that.
You guys have any questions?
No.
Yeah, look, just a minor point. I, in the reason, a big, the big reason to leave section four blank for future use, because if you eliminate it, it means you're changing all the receiving numbers after it. They get bumped up, so now it would be a bigger amendment to be considering. And it's also easier if you had to add something in the future if you have section four.
What, article?
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six. Okay. Article thirty-six?
I, I will make a motion to place and recommend, I mean, you know, give the annual town meeting...
I'll second that.
I can take motion, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Article thirty-seven?
Article thirty-seven and thirty-eight have been the pilot, language for the proposed pilot agreements that the board assesses have been working on. One, one would be a pilot agreement for the Minnesota Array behind the Woodgills. And the, in the second one, would be a smaller, would be a pilot agreement for a smaller system further down on Waylon
Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to place and recommend article thirty-seven and article thirty-eight on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you care, it's a aye. Article thirty-eight? He carries it, aye. Article thirty-eight?
I do both, I think.
Oh, you did both at the same time, okay. Thirty-nine?
Motion to place on the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article forty?
Motion to place on annual town meeting warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion made second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
That was easy.
I'm glad we waited and we digested it all.
Yes.
We had Nicole here, so that was good.
Yes, thank you, guys. Try to take your meeting off.
Yeah.
Wasn't the same.
Really bring up the ass.
Yeah, that's me for your meeting, you weren't there.
I hadn't mentioned, I just wasn't there.
Okay. Um, we meet at seven, but we're going to try to get in our, um, executive session first, guys, if you don't mind. Uh, so it's not going to take us long, but we'll pull you back in. Okay, we need a motion to go into executive session.
Um, make a motion to go into executive session under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A. Want me to read the?
Uh, if you don't mind.
Okay. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair sort of declares.
And the chair does.
Right, that in firefighters, local four-three-three-two, that in police officers, local three-oh-six, that in dispatchers, last communications, employees.
I'll second that.
Motion made second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we are meeting.
Okay. So I have it recording for your guys' open session.
I don't need to read the, uh,
No.
matters of, and, uh, since we're already in an open meeting, we don't need to do the pledge.
Right.
We'll call the, um, May fifteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting of the Finance Committee to order.
Oh, yeah, can you, oh, yeah.
Need to just unplug them, please.
Oh, he's muted.
Dave, are you able to hear us? Ron, are you able to hear us?
Jeff, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, like we do, uh, like we do have a member, oh, the ThinkCon, uh, that's hybrid, so the ThinkCon will have to take any vote, says a vote, although, the whole meeting.
And just if anyone gets up, please be careful on that wire.
Yeah. We need a roll call for the start of the meeting?
No. No, you can call it whatever. A lot of votes, although.
All right, so we are up to, uh, the warrant article recommendations. Everybody got the email this morning, this afternoon? Uh, we'll go over that. Easy, quick one first. Uh, we've got some prior year bills, uh, auto parts from the police station, police details for a transfer station in VOS, historical commission, BPRTS.
Oh, that is a thing, uh, that's historical commission.
And then, uh, and that electric bill, National Red Toro. It's thirty-five, sixty-nine, sixteen. And, um, we assume we wanna, we typically do prior year bills with, uh, free cash. Any questions on any of those?
I make a motion, we vote to, um, approve. Thank you. Recommend Article three.
Second?
To be funded from?
From free cash.
Oh, from free cash, the amount of three thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixteen cents.
Okay, now I see.
Hey, motion made, seconded. Uh, Bill, we, we need to take the rolls, the votes, um, individually tonight, so.
Oh.
Yay or nay?
Yay. Yay.
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
And Peter, yay. So, uh, yays have it. Uh, next article? Gotta take it, take it out of order a little bit. The, uh, police cruiser, there's an article up for a police cruiser for eighty-five thousand. We had been trying to buy one cruiser every year, uh, to, to be able to replenish. We couldn't do that the last two years, so this is, this is kind of the first, first since, I believe, twenty-one.
Right.
Right now, half of the fleet is over a hundred thousand miles, half of the fleet is under a hundred thousand miles.
Half being how many?
Uh, is it about? Six.
Half is six, yes.
Ideally, then this would replace, uh, would, it would move on one of the over a hundred into a more, uh,
It would be like a DTO car.
Yeah, DTO car, so it's not relying on it much. And then this would be one of the standard.
Um, Mike, do you feel the budget can support us at this point?
Uh, yes, I, yes, uh, like honestly, I believe like it needs to at this point, if like we would, oh, like if we did, we'd be going back, or we would run risk of going backwards with the fleet.
We okay this? We are hoping to get the car in twenty-six?
No, like we've actually, the, the PD has, uh, like is in the process of actually switching the fleet all the way from Ford to Chevy Tahos, uh, like in the, um, uh, like in the, uh, uh, in the ordering time on the Tahos is much, much, much quicker. Um, just as an example, um, we, the last cruiser that we did buy, uh, like I believe in twenty-two, uh, like we did actually receive it in October of twenty-three. And, um, uh, and as we know it, uh, five days later, it, um, the cruiser was totaled. And so, I, I, at, I, at that point, because of the delays and other issues with the explorers, the police department, um, they put, they placed a lot of for Tahoe, uh, that was just actually put in service last week. So, so we do have quicker time and are experiencing quicker time. So, yeah, the return will be quicker, as anticipated, to be quicker.
So we are hoping to get it in twenty-four?
Hopefully in calendar year twenty-four. But I would say definitely in fiscal year twenty-five.
Okay, thank you.
This, um, this did co, I sat in on the, uh, Capitolella Committee and this did come up through them and it did get pushed as, or advanced as needed.
Okay.
Have we been seeing, um, higher, um, maintenance costs on the existing fleet?
Yeah, they did have, they did have that at the, uh,
So on the.
Excitation, yes.
Hopefully with a newer vehicle, we won't have as many maintenance costs.
Yeah, so the vehicles with over a hundred thousand, between two and seven thousand a year, uh, overlapped here.
And that would be six vehicles.
Yeah.
So I can thankfully, oh, uh, uh, oh, yeah, thankfully, it's like a lot of, oh, yeah, it's a lot of our needs, we do have a very good in-house component in the highway department, um, that helps us with tow load costs, but there's still costs.
Do we have, um, extended warranties on these vehicles?
No, it's not warranted. Like we just have a freight warranty and then.
And after?
Yes.
The, uh, motion, um,
And this eighty-five thousand is coming out of?
Free cash.
Free cash. Okay. I make a motion, we vote to recommend the use of eighty-five thousand dollars from free cash for a police cruiser.
I second.
Uh, for the vote, Bill?
Aye.
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 Ron?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Uh, just as, as I guess, just a note, um, the, the levy budget, there's no room in the levy for any, any of the articles. And I don't think the anticipation right now would be to transfer anything out of, either the stabilization funds.
No.
So we really all count on free cash.
Yeah, the only one, like not to jump around, the only one that, uh, like, uh, like other than the pay access funded one, uh, we do, uh, we have a pay access funded article. Uh, we also have an article that we are propping from the existing article. Um, and then the, uh, the thirty-two thousand five hundred dollar cost for the DES, yeah, and the that musical phone system. Um, we do have an ability to, um, what is, uh, we know now, uh, like we're goes unspent as part of, uh, FY twenty-four. Um, yeah, school assessment, like we will have, um, twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars, uh, like as unexpended funds from that line at the end of twenty-four. So rather than drawing on that whole thirty-two thousand five hundred dollar cost from free cash, we do have an ability to transfer, um, twenty-five, twenty-five, seven from the operational budget this year, like in the education line, uh, like into a warrant article, so to fund the phone upgrades, we only have to rely on an additional sixty-eight hundred to get to the thirty-two-five, which saved on our bill on free cash as well. And I believe soon, everything else that was free cash.
Yes, and the sewer one for a hundred and twenty-five thousand is a reappropriation as well. Everything else is free cash.
A reappropriation, some is sewer.
From sewer.
Yes.
So. I'm, I'm going off of the summary sheet, so when we get to that point where the, the ones that aren't on here, I'll just rely on you guys to point us in the right direction for that.
Yeah, yeah, the only thing, Peter, that's not like, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not an article summary sheet, like a free cash summary sheet.
Okay.
So it was not important. I'm sorry. Sorry for that confusion.
So we should be on Article six for the sewer and seven? Oh, if you want to start from the very beginning with the budgetary.
Yeah, yeah, if we can start from the top, if that's okay, just so that.
So we did Article three?
Yep, Article four.
So Article four, we've made our recommendations. The only, the only question or the item to bring up from our side would be, uh, in one forty-five, treasurer?
The, uh, yeah, just for the protection, Article five, the operating budget, Article four is just the setting of salaries.
Okay.
Time officials. Uh, oh, yeah, like in the salaries of time officials, as we know, like are all, like are also included in the operating budget as well. But we have to, uh, uh, like actually check, section one a week of chapter forty-one, uh, uh, the general has required it to be actually voted on separately as well.
So just for sewer commissioners?
Mm-hmm.
Where they are their own. Recommending to keep that at the same levels as?
They have proposed to give themselves a two and a half percent increase. Uh, like we have been trying to have alignment and when, when we do propose increase, uh, like increases in board, uh, uh, in board and committee stipends. And at the beginning of the FY twenty-five planning, we, the board secretary did vote that the, that increases, um, would only apply to, uh, only apply to employees and full-time elected officials.
Mike, did you draw the short straw to talk to Woody about that?
No, I didn't.
Any questions on any of these?
No. I make a motion that we vote to, um, recommend the town officials' salaries as reported in Article four.
Second.
Bill?
Why am I in here?
You're my left.
Huh?
You're on my left.
Oh, okay. Yay.
Aye.
Yay.
Ron?
Yay.
Peter, yay. The ayes have it? I'll start on my next time. Now, Article five, uh, the only, there was a email, the, uh, town treasurer, uh, for one forty-five, he received, uh, updated, uh, not invoice, but expected invoice for, for the actuary, uh, for an additional four thousand dollars, if he requested, if we could increase the twenty-six, seven up to thirty thousand seven hundred.
Four.
It was the, it's the actuary for the, uh,
Uh, it'd be, I believe, forty-four and forty-five, uh, like our requirements, uh, yeah, like in auditing, that we have to have like actual, an actuarial analysis completed out of audit, uh, every year or every other year, like I forget, that could maybe happen, but we do have that. Oh, yeah, we do actually have that out of the costs, as a recurring cost.
So that forty-five hundred is for the analysis?
No, no, like, uh, the cost, uh, the cost of the actuarial analysis, part of it was already included in the budget, but he just actually learned of a cost increase that, um, that we face in twenty-five, that will add another four, um, that based on what has already been reduced, um, from his budget, um, to the tune of, uh, like a forty-two hundred dollars, he won't have the ability, he won't have the ability, uh, like, uh, in the budget that has currently been recommended by the ThinkCon, he won't have the ability to absorb those increased costs that he just learned about, uh, in FY twenty-five based on the ThinkCon's recommendations.
So in twenty-twenty-four, does he have any unused funds?
He, uh, he may, to be honest with you, I don't have that information with me. He's just, yeah, what he brought to our attention earlier, was just strictly focused on, um, that bill coming due in FY twenty-five.
So did, it looks like at the end of the year, there might be some there that, that will end up going free cash for next year.
Enough to cover it?
Yeah, but like if, when it's actually incurred and if he doesn't like incur it until FY twenty-five, he can't pay it with FY twenty-four.
Right, right, you have to get a transfer.
But is it possible we might not need to transfer?
For, if I'm understanding correctly, the bill next year is going up by four thousand dollars, that's for fiscal year twenty-five, so for fiscal year twenty-four, even if there are funds left in that account, they cannot be, um, they are returned to free cash and next.
And then we would have to come back and ask for it if needed.
Yeah, if it was needed before next May, you'd have to have another town meeting to do a free cash transfer.
That's cost, all the costs.
Is it open related?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
That, um, that's been the only updated Article five number that I'm aware of.
Well, I make a motion that we vote to recommend Article five, um, as presented. We, do you guys want to revote the total for Department one forty-five? Oh, do we have to do that? Is it one twenty-five or one?
One twenty-five.
So one forty-five.
So you're increasing?
The total would be one, 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 seven, seven, two, eight, nine.
Yes.
One, one. Seven, two, eight, nine.
Seven, seven, two.
Seven, two, eight, nine. Seven, two, eight, nine.
One, one, seven, seven, two. Since we were at one of seven.
Right.
Yes.
And the Board of Selectmen are recommending one sixteen. And we should go with one, one eleven.
Yes. I make a motion that we recommend for the approach appropriation for town treasurer, the amount of one hundred eleven thousand seven hundred seventy-two dollars and eighty-nine cents.
A second.
Sue?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you need, do you need us to run through the rest of the numbers, or you're okay if just following those through?
Oh, yeah, no, that's fine, that's the only change.
And I don't have any other changes or requests even for changes in any of the other lines except for one forty-five, so we can move on to Article six.
We didn't vote on the, oh, yes, we did, sorry.
You started this time.
I thought so too.
Did we not do Article six already?
I definitely did.
We did a recommendation on Article five.
Before we changed it.
Yeah, like, here was, uh, here was to increase pressure, but they already have all the other recommendations.
Yeah, that's true. But we didn't do sewer last time?
No.
We had the, we had the breakout of the expenses and the capital and the salaries for sewer, so this is just the total back-to-back number. Yeah, it's the same numbers.
That's what we voted before?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend Article, Article six as presented.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 And I. All right, Article seven is to re-appropriate FY twenty-four fund power, for the power plant rehabilitation project.
When you say re-appropriate, that's money that they bought?
I can explain that one. So in their current fiscal year twenty-four budget, their operating budget from the enterprise fund, they have a line for capital, and they funded it, I believe, at one fifty. And so we're just re-appropriating and taking one hundred and twenty-five out to put it into a special article, which going forward, that special article money will strictly just be designated for the power plant upgrades to, and that will also match the, our funding reporting for when we applied for ARPA and actually did receive the funding from ARPA.
Oh, okay.
So we're just keeping it all aligned with, you know, so that money's set aside, and it won't close out to retain or anything, go back and forth. It'll just stay in that article going forward for the project.
And ARPA covers the whole thing?
Big.
The fourth of it.
Yeah.
Most of it. And can I just ask, what is this power plant upgrade project that, is that, to, to set that power plant that's near the?
Police station?
Police station?
Yes, yes, yeah, we own, uh, we own, uh, we own the pumping station, uh, right in front of that tower, uh, like, in the police station, um, the police, the, uh, like, in the, the pumping station needs about a half a million dollars worth in upgrades to, because that is the lowest point that actually a sewer line goes down to, that we pump it all the way back up.
I guess it's just a terminology that I'm curious about. It says power plant, in other words.
Yep.
Upgrade, like, they're capable of upgrading their own power plant, but.
Yeah, no, point, uh, you know, point well taken, we can, like, revert that as well, like, I, yeah, we own, oh, we own the infrastructure, it is actually dieting infrastructure.
Okay.
But, uh, point very well taken.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend Article seven as presented.
Second.
Uh, Ron?
Aye.
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 Aye. Article eight to transfer from free cash eighty-eight thousand personnel ice.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend Article eight as presented.
A second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 Aye. Um, you don't need anything from us on Article nine, right?
Article nine, no, but Article ten, yes. Do you agree?
Yes, the spending on that is.
Article ten is just setting the.
Dollar limit, yes.
Power, you know, what they can spend that at the fees that come in.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend Article ten as presented.
Uh, second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 And I.
One thousand eleven, one thousand twelve, one thousand thirteen.
Thirteen technically is financial, because it does, uh, like, increases the senior exemption, which is a good thing, uh, which also does have an impact on our overlay, I'm not sure. Got any thoughts on that?
Um, because we're not spending money.
Okay.
I don't think it needs to be the ThinkCon. We're more than welcome to.
Well, if it's, if it's reused, then it'd be more people taking advantage of it. Do we have a fund already set aside for that?
We do.
So it's already paid for?
Um, so every year, we put money into our overlay, our abatement and exemptions account, and whenever residents apply for abatements, it automatically just comes out of that account. So what we put into the overlay does affect our levy balance, but that comes from the assessors and doesn't really give over to the year.
So we know how many people have been taking the abatement and.
They estimated.
They estimated, but there's a cap on it, so once they hit the cap, will they not continue to, if it goes over a certain cap, or is it open?
No, there's a cap on the dollar limit, uh, for each senior, but there's no cap on it. How many seniors can apply? So we do have to project, um, based on census information, and, and we, to generally assesses, I try to do that.
So if we had a, an open date and a closed date, then we could put a aggregate number on that?
There is a.
Yeah, yeah, they have to be in by April first of every year.
And then we don't have a way of saying, okay, well, we're open till April first as long as we have funding available?
And no, if we have it, we have to, yeah, we have to make a cap.
On that?
I don't.
I believe it's possible.
Have we gone over on the pass?
No. We're not running a surplus, we're running basically even. Because when I do the recap, this date does say what amount to put in.
Oh, they tell us.
Which unexpectedly got adjusted last year, which is why I asked for some free cash to be available in case we need to cover our levy, if that does change when we're setting the tax rate in the fall.
Now, there's an anticipated increase because you're going from seventy down to sixty-five.
We accounted for that, for what we increased our overlay to one hundred forty-two thousand to put in this year. Last year, DOR had us do one hundred and twenty-seven thousand and change.
So fifteen thousand dollar difference for the five years?
That's what, for one year, or for the age gap.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, um, I think they figured it was like a, like, three percent of the population was actually using it, and then so they added, you know, another three percent, another fifteen people, I think, is what it came out to.
Yeah, like, again, that's why having.
Resident, yeah.
Yeah, and that's why, I, yeah, like, that's why having, having, having a excess levy capacity over the levy is hope, is hopeful based on that increase. We don't know how DOR, Alec is gonna come back on that this year. Alec would be going from seventy to sixty-five, so. Yeah, but, yeah, like, it isn't actually like a spending article, so it's really the part of the ThinkCon.
Fine.
Yeah.
Leave it as is?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Fourteen that we do.
Yeah, the, like, CPC articles, they typically, as, as I was mentioning at the BOSS earlier, they typically do go straight to town meeting. They don't have to have a recommendation, because they just go straight to town meeting with the CPC recommendation. So again, my view, that's really at the priority of the ThinkCon as well.
Okay.
Yes.
We just want to remember, we're gonna mess on that. And that would be fifteen, sixteen as well.
So do we need a motion on it?
Nope, no, nothing required for us on those.
Seventeen.
Do we have a, an amount for seventeen?
Fifty thousand dollars.
Um, just to, an update. So the spreadsheet that we got today with the proposal for free cash, if, if all of these are approved, then the available free cash at the end of the meeting would be now one hundred four thousand four eighty-three.
Oh, we have to point.
That is, that's based on the Board of Selectmen's recommendations. With ours, it would be one hundred sixty-one.
One of four plus the.
Fifty-seven.
Just the fifty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions on that?
On the spreadsheet. Thank you.
So where's the? Yeah, so it is reduced in here, but it's. Our recommendations get voted in, and then we gotta get out of that.
When we last met, did he say that that was gonna be forty thousand, uh, fifty?
We've had.
Capital stabilization?
Yeah, we hadn't really talked about.
We really, yeah.
Going into.
What was that, what was that amount at the end of last meeting we were talking about? We had another forty thousand.
Forty, Sarita was hoping to have forty thousand left in.
Oh, to be a positive level limit, yeah, of forty thousand.
In case that overlay goes over.
No, that is not any of this, no.
So this is the Board of Selectmen request, or supporting a fifty thousand dollar contribution to the capital stabilization fund, but Greg asked, you have roughly one point six million, so it would have.
Just shy of one point six, nevermind.
About one point six five.
Any questions? I make a motion that we vote to recommend the amount of fifty thousand dollars into the capital stabilization fund in Article seven, Article seventeen from free cash.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter, aye.
Article eighteen was not placed.
Okay, Article nineteen is the continued funding of Main Street, would be to put another seventy-five thousand dollars towards the costs of redoing that road.
The pre-existing ATM?
Uh, annual town meeting, Article number twenty of last year.
It's not an ATM, I think.
No. Which, by putting this seventy-five in, we would have how much towards?
Oh, in total?
Yeah.
We, based on the funding with Chapter ninety, that we have, have leverage in total already for this project, we, that would bring us to, hold on a second. That would bring us to having, to having, to having, to having a committed project balance of one point two two five million dollars, of about a two point five million dollar project right now. Of that, of that one point two two five, about six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of that would come from the, from the annual town meeting warrant articles that have been funded in this way so far. So as we go, we're building, uh, we're building our ability, uh, we're building up our ability to fund more of the projects as we go.
Yes. The timeline is twenty-five and twenty-six right now.
Yes. So if, 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 yes.
David will be twenty.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars in Article nineteen to be funded for the Main Street Highway reconstruction project from free cash.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 Peter, aye. Article twenty.
This has been recommended by the Board of Selectmen?
Has.
Placed and recommended.
Okay. Uh, this also came to capital outlay, and this, it's not really a, it's not really a trailer driving around, it's more of a storage trailer, right?
No, it is a driving around, yes, and, and storage, it would be great, yes.
Okay.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend Article twenty, in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars be taken from free cash.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 Peter, aye.
Article twenty-one has also been placed and recommended by the Board of Selectmen.
This is the drainage for Old Simstead Avenue. Any questions on this?
I make a motion, we vote to recommend Article twenty-one, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for drainage upgrade in Old Simstead Avenue, to be taken from free cash.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Aye.
Peter, aye.
Article twenty-two has not been placed. Article twenty-three has been placed and recommended.
Article twenty-three came to the capital outlay, and, um, we say, basically, we want to set bathrooms so that they have two bathrooms to use when everybody comes back to the garage, so that everyone's not trying to use one bathroom.
Do they really mean?
Well, we want to avoid the one outside, you really can't do that no more. You got, you got, you got houses right behind the garage.
Right, right, right.
It is at times, so they take forty-five, forty-five minutes for everybody to get there.
Oh, my God. I make a recommendation, we vote to approve the ten thousand dollar expenditure out of free cash for a bathroom modifications in Article twenty-three.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 Peter, aye.
Article twenty-four has been recommend, has been placed and recommended, and that would be to, to appropriate from free cash, the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to be expended to fund the first year payment of lease purchase for, like, an excavator. That would be the first of a three-year.
Three-year?
That'd be forty-five thousand a year for the re-raise.
So since I understand you had your choice, or your, your wish was, ask excavator or dump truck, go with the excavator?
I wasn't asked that question.
Well, generally.
You need both.
Which one do you need more?
The excavator is replacing, could be replacing that thirty-year-old backhoe. That's, that should be slated to be replaced, yes, which depending what breaks, you can get the part for it.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend the expenditure of forty-five thousand dollars from Free Cash for the first year lease payment of excavator in Article twenty-four. Free cash.
I second.
Ron?
Aye.
Doug?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Peter, aye. Just to bring it back to the, so we're replacing a thirty-year-old excavator with this, the dump truck that was gonna be replaced with a ninety-five. So next year, that'll be a thirty-year-old piece of equipment too, just to, just for everybody to keep in, keep in mind that that's, it's an antique. Did, did you get any prices on our lease for the dump truck?
We're still working on it. Last week, municipal leasing is tricky and it, it comes down to one person in the court. That person was away last week, they're away now, anticipated late in the afternoon, information, just checked my emails, no information back yet.
Thank you, Tom.
It, it is available. Comes down, it comes down to when you're signing, is the market rate? That's what it comes down to. So when we do it on the lease, we're just appropriating enough for the monthly lease payments for that fiscal year? Or, or annual will be a one.
Yeah, a lot of... Just an annual.
Just a one-time payment per year? Yes. And that would be eighty-five, we're estimating eighty-five, four fifty.
The different, this is another piece of equipment, so the Article twenty-two that was not put on was for the purchase of the dump truck.
Okay.
And that's not coming up?
That's not coming up, but it will be in the future. And at the Capital Outlay Committee, one of their requests was that we find out what a lease payment on the dump truck would be, so, but they haven't gone back to. Twenty-five, though, is a new line striping machine, I'm assuming that's for the new type of paint?
Yes. Paint plays a role and the machine we have cannot use the paint that we have to use now.
Do you have an idea, on an annual basis, what we'll save by buying this machine and not using a marking company?
Every year, no, I cannot, because that's a very volatile market right now. They think they're gonna monopolize it, so I choose to do my own sidelines and crosswalks and parking stuff, you know, that we can handle. The, the double sidelines throughout the town, obviously, is a, a big undertaking, that should be found out this time.
If we had to pay them for everything, do you have an idea of what, what this year we would spend?
I did not do the math.
Okay.
It's, it's, it definitely will be more than the machine. We definitely, the machine would definitely pay for itself within the two years.
Okay.
Yes.
And what do you expect the life of this machine to be?
I, I don't really care, it can go thirty, forty years easily.
That's our usual. Thank you.
So doing it ourselves is gonna be cheaper than having a...
Absolutely.
Okay, great. That sounds good.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend Article twenty-five for the expenditure from Free Cash, the amount of eight thousand five hundred forty-five dollars for a new line stripping machine, striping machine.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 Peter, aye. So twenty-six is just a reappropriation of a special article from last year?
Twenty-two, twenty-two. Probably a special at twenty-two, twenty-two.
Okay.
For one thing.
So we had three thousand set aside for the point-of-sale system, we didn't need it, but now they can get the security cameras out of, out of that money.
So they really do have security cameras where that sign says that, there's a security camera down there? That subscription ended, so there's no cameras at this point. Okay, I walked my dog down there, that's why I saw it. I did have pictures at two-thirty in the morning often, was that you?
No.
Not at that time. Yes, there is some predawn activity in that facility.
Any questions on that?
So the three thousand wasn't used last year, so it was just reabsorbed into our free...
It was a special, so it sits in a special article.
Oh.
It sits as waiting.
So this is a new use for it, not the, we're not using the point-of-sale, this is for the security cameras, that'll...
Right, 'cause the POS system is in place.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend Article twenty-six, the amount of three thousand dollars from Free, oh, no, no. This is a reappropriation of funds in the amount of three thousand dollars.
Second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 Twenty-seven is for their, for the server paid for by PAG access, so it's just allowing approval, recommending that the transfer you need from their funds to buy their server.
I make a motion, we vote to recommend Article twenty-seven.
I second.
Ron?
Aye.
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 Peter, aye. Twenty, twenty, the town clerk had come to the Capital Outlay looking to update some voting equipment, basically iPads, right, that the software will be able to tabulate everything pretty much instantaneously instead of, right now, they spend two, three, four days counting the votes at the end. So she is gonna be able to save overtime and labor. She couldn't give us a price or a dollar amount at that point as to what she's gonna save, but, but it will have a saving and instantaneous results as opposed to waiting a couple days.
Will this be a one-time initial impact on the purchase of the iPads and then a subscription to follow?
Yes. Twelve hundred a year?
Twelve hundred a year, yes.
And this year it will be?
This year, the sixty-three is...
Yeah, it already included in sixty-three hundred.
Okay, it is included.
Yeah.
And then it's gonna drop back to twelve hundred after.
Drop to twelve hundred and hopefully we'll be, we should, I would soon be able to absorb that in, my assumption is that we should be able to absorb that in a cut in overtime now.
Right.
And how long do you think these iPads will last before they have to be replaced?
Five years?
Five years, I'd say.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be used how often?
It depends, this year we have, what, three, uh, we have two elections in the fall alone, yeah, like it depends on the election cycle.
So like two or three times a year for five years and then you get fifteen uses?
Yeah, it is like a press, like it is like...
For sixty-three hundred.
Right.
Yeah, I guess we're one of the...
Only holders that actually like still do it with this antiquated paper processing way. Like everyone around us are already there.
It's taught-hand counting.
So it's, it's, um, it's for your voter list, so you know, when they check in with the paper list, so this replaces the paper list, so it's different from your ballots, it's, so they basically would scan it every voter, it, it saves that labor cost and in town, we use the poll pads, yeah. And I, I would say that's about right as far as the, you know, the lifespan and all that stuff, yeah.
And how many are we purchasing poll pads? It says, it doesn't give a number, I believe it was four, four?
Yeah, because I think we have three precincts and one extra.
That's fair, yeah.
Cause it's usually A through M and then M through Z, so will there be two pads at each table?
So that each district would only need...
Each precinct, one poll pad with a backup, so...
So you wouldn't need...
A through Z will be one.
A through Z and one.
It'll be precinct one, two, three, no more A through Z.
Yeah, right.
I make a motion that we vote to recommend Article twenty-eight for the purchase of poll pads in the amount of six thousand three hundred dollars from Free Cash.
Second.
Go in favor, Ron?
Aye.
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 Peter's aye. All right, so this, Article twenty-nine, it says a little bit of a change. Well, the last, how were you, how were you closing?
Yeah, the tax would be the same, however, however, the recommendation should be to fund...
Twenty-five thousand seven hundred from fiscal year, twenty-four education operating budget, and then six thousand eight hundred from Free Cash.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't just do the twenty-five, seven as a transfer, one of our transfers? As opposed to having it voted on?
The only, I like, I think it may be cleaner to have an article because it's cleaner to end costing, seeing the funding directly to the school district rather than have it as an end-of-year transfer, then we'd have to encumber the funds and then try to figure out a way to get it back to the school district.
True, 'cause the end-of-year transfer is go like operating to operating, not necessarily operating to a special article.
Okay. So they received the last bill for the schools and they're twenty-five thousand seven hundred under the budget for twenty-four, so the idea is to transfer twenty-five, seven from the school budget towards this special article and then fund the rest of the sixty-eight hundred with Free Cash. This is to update the phone system so that they're E nine-one-one capable. Is it the middle school still has the original phones?
Elementary.
Actually, all of them.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
So the school districts wouldn't just divert that twenty-five, seven to DES?
No.
Cause it's... Oh, because it's town...
It's in our current operating budget, right?
Yeah, like you know, also because it's capital and with the regional agreement, capital does have to be voted on separately as well.
So are we doing two votes on this?
Just one article?
One, yeah, with the recommendation with the funding sources.
Okay. I make a recommenda, I make a motion that we vote to recommend Article twenty-nine, reallocating twenty-five thousand seven hundred dollars from the DR assessment school budget to be used in the DES phone, DESDM, phone upgrades with an additional six thousand eight hundred dollars coming from Free Cash.
Second.
Does that sound right?
Sound good?
Yes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions on that?
Aye.
Oh. Sue?
Aye.
Peter, aye. Uh, thirty, we already did.
Yes.
Good, the thirty's okay. Thirty-six, we don't have to worry about. The thirty-one, I'm sorry, not thirty-six.
Yeah, we already got through thirty, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thirty-one's all set.
Thirty-one, it is like a concom?
So...
And the fifteen thousand for concom?
Yeah, nothing passed on thirty-one, though.
Uh, no, it is on the warrant and it is recommended.
Okay.
For the conservation?
Yes.
Thirty...
See, the numbers might be a little off.
Oh, okay.
It depends what you're looking at.
All right, so I'm looking at thirty-one, the twenty-six thousand for the...
That is not recommended.
Inside, that's off, sorry to interrupt.
Thirty-two is fifteen thousand for conservation.
Oh.
I show thirty-one fifteen thousand.
Yeah, so the, the numbers between our version and what they're, what they have are different.
Okay.
We, yeah, the, yeah, the twenty-six thousand, uh, will come up in a moment as an end-of-year transfer after we hit through the warrant.
So our number thirty-two, which is fifteen thousand dollars in legal fees for conservation commission, and this is...
Forest Hills.
Forest Hills.
Yeah.
And other related appeals. On for that one?
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause Forest Hills isn't written in the article.
No, but yeah, like basically like Forest Hills and other appeals that we face. You don't wanna single any.
Yeah, I do.
So on the, is this listed as thirty-one or thirty-two?
At town, thirty-one.
Okay. I make a motion, we vote to recommend Article thirty-one to transfer fifteen thousand dollars from Free Cash for conservation commission legal and related expenses regarding Forest Hills.
No.
Yeah.
Regarding complaints filed against the Conservation Commission, the town, by him, and the relevant town officials.
That way...
Thank you.
Second.
Any questions on that?
No, 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 you're...
Aye.
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 Is aye. So Ron, just, just for your, by not naming Forest Hills in there, it leaves it open so that it can be applied against any event. Thirty, thirty's definitely nothing, nothing.
I think that is everything.
Do we have the paperwork on the transfer?
I think, that's the original.
Okay. Uh, this was also brought up at the, moving on to the transfer request, the police department is requesting a transfer of twenty-six thousand eleven dollars and this is for security cameras in the...
Police Department, actually.
Yeah, the police department, basically, in the, in the holdings and when they bring it to the end.
Lockup, any of you, um...
Right now, the system isn't, the system isn't working, they're utilizing body cam to, for any of the recordings, so taking the camera off, putting it down on the table and...
Was there a system in there?
There was a system, uh, the system basically broke our first, our very first meeting, uh, there was a prior bill that came in from the company that was supposed to fix it and didn't fix it and we said we're not paying for that and they're gone, that company's gone. This, this came, it would be, there was another company that came and assisted?
Yeah, like you basically like the, the, here the software is non-operatable at this point, like we can't do any patches or upgrades, it's just the whole, the whole software has to be replaced. And, but based on what has been discussed, we do have a time is of the essence, all I really need, so that's why we do have an ability to address this as an end-of-year transfer, just so we can get a jump on it now. We did try to link the, the project need to the eligible uses of the APRA funding as well, that unfortunately, we went back and forth trying to make all each and every link we could, but like it just really didn't fit in the APRA bucket, so, but yeah, like as I mentioned, time is of the essence, so...
How's the warranty on this system? I mean, do we, you know, after having deal, it's a new police station and if our security has failed already with a system that, with a company that is now out of business...
Yeah, what I have, like, I don't, uh, like, so like, I can't speak to the warranty that we're gonna have, I can follow up with that, uh, because we, uh, we do, um, we do, we will have a contract with the company installing to do one, the, to do upgrades as well. It's my general understanding that the, uh, the software that was initially installed, uh, was on the, um, I was on the, I was really like a later, I was really like a later type of model that was put in and it, like, and the technology was already on the verge of really being phased out, so it wouldn't be, like inherently, it wouldn't have the opportunity for upgrades and patches and everything else and, um, I, yeah, and I think just actually sometimes from what I generally understand, because that was, you know, seven, about seven years ago, seven years ago, I like my understanding that I think the town just wanted to get all like kind of less expensive software in there, I like and unfortunately, we're paying the price a little sooner than we ever was.
Thank you.
So the bill that's outstanding that we refused to pay, how much was that bill?
So, the bill that's outstanding that we refused to pay, how much was that bill?
Seventeen hundred, seventeen and change.
Seventeen hundred, yeah. And now we're spending twenty-six thousand, hoping it would be more of a wash.
Yeah. So. Yeah, just like, oh, yeah, complete replacement of all the equipment.
And the request is a transfer from health insurance that will be underspent by the twenty-six, so it's really, it's re-appropriating twenty-six thousand from health insurance over to the police department by security cameras.
Okay, so it's not a new assessment?
Nice.
Right.
Okay, it's covered.
But you need a-
I hope, I don't think.
Any questions on that, Ron?
No.
Or anyone? Take that motion? Yeah.
I make a motion that we vote to transfer from the health insurance and department, do I have department number for this?
Nine, it's like the third-digit number, nine one four, maybe?
Okay, thank you, from department nine one four, in the amount of twenty-six thousand ten dollars and twenty-six cents, to the police department.
Two ten.
Department two ten, in the amount of twenty-six thousand. Ten dollars and twenty-six cents.
Yeah, you have, there's two numbers in the health insurance line, twenty-six eleven and twenty-six ten, twenty-six.
Yeah, the twenty-six thousand oh one oh is what the BLS did vote on at the time, putting that together, it was the last minute, and I just rounded up, but the vote is the twenty-six thousand, ten dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, Ron?
Aye.
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 Peter, aye. That is, that is all done. We have, again, based on, based on our recommendations, they would be, we would be under the levy limit by forty thousand dollars, we would have available free cash of one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. To get to that point, we would be using two hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-one cents out of free cash, we would be allocating one-time retirements of eighty-five thousand dollars from free cash, and a, and one-time out of, out of district student fee for a hundred thousand, two hundred sixteen dollars. So, with the snow and ice, that's a total of four hundred eighty-eight thousand, four hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-one cents coming out of free cash, really four hundred thousand, four ninety-four, eighty-one for this current year.
And what will our free cash balance be after this expenditure?
After all of this, it would leave one hundred and sixty-one thousand in free cash, based on our, our recommendations, based on the Board of Selectment recommendations, depending on what, did anything change on the?
No.
So, somewhere between a hundred and four thousand and two hundred and fifty thousand, the Board of Health, is that a hundred and fifty thousand?
A hundred and fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty-eight thousand, so it's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand that they had not recommended. We do, we run the risk at town meeting that somebody decides to push their recommendation on that, and then-
And then the town votes.
And then the town votes, and we don't have the money, well, to wait, so we'll cross that bridge when it happens.
We have to get that from, what are those other two funds, stabilization and?
Yeah, just capital stabilization and-
Yeah, but it would have to be approved to get somehow, I mean, like, we would have it in available levy funding based on how we plan, but it just has-
Let's hope we-
That's a hypothetical at this point.
Okay.
It'll be, hopefully, this moderator doesn't ask for an ending time of after eleven, because we would probably hit that. But the main, main point, I just wanted everyone on the finance committee to understand that we're four hundred thousand dollars basically free cash funding, that, you know, what that says to me with, we've got a roughly six hundred thousand dollar increase next year in BP's debt payment, so a million dollars more that we, free cash, we don't necessarily know we're gonna have next year, um, next year's probably not gonna be fun.
So, what do we have to do with twenty-six?
It's, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be rough.
And where would that money come from?
I mean-
For the tax return?
Yes. I mean, to me, assuming that we didn't look at tax increase as a, as an option, and the next option is services.
Right.
Because you got, if you-
Trash is a big problem.
Yeah, trash.
Three hundred thousand dollars in cash is money we can't just spend for people to get rid of stuff they don't want.
Something to look forward to over the summer. That, that's, that's all I've got. I'm gonna hit these guys first. Ron, anything, any questions or anything?
No, I'll say it. Thanks, thanks for letting me use the Zoom, it's nice to be able to have the mute on while you're coughing.
Yeah. Glad you could make it. Dave, anything, any questions on yours, in your side?
No, we're just gonna have to put our thinking caps on and get really creative for twenty-six, it sounds like, but hopefully things will improve.
Joe's iPhone, any questions for you? Alright. Tom, anything, any questions? Yeah, it's your turn. Forty-five, man?
Uh, we're all set.
Just actually, one thing, like, uh, before the board, I just wrapped up, just trying to make the, for the board, as we know, made, voted for the articles, also voted for the, also voted for the funding recommendations, I give there, also the board, would entertain making a motion to adopt the town administrative funding source recommendations, so we can match, so we can match all the funding source recommendations that have been from, just so we have, just, so we have the funding source recommendations aligned, that would be helpful for how the warrant will be. Is that okay?
Sure.
I don't know whether you should have, do you?
No.
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion for the Board of Selectment funding source recommendations to match the town administrator funding source recommendations for the annual town meeting line.
I'll sign it down.
Motion, any second, any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
motion to adjourn?
I'll sign it down.
Any discussion? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do they have to adjourn their meeting too?
We have to.
Oh, sorry.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Ron?
Aye.
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 Peter's aye.
Hold on.
Hold on.